It's six oh two. I'm gonna call to order the Town of Rutland Select Board and Board of Public Works meeting for tonight, Monday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Six oh two, we're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library at two eighty Main Street. We are on Zoom for remote participation and we are being recorded, well televised, live local access as well as recorded for re-airing on local access as well as our YouTube and other social media outlets. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation. Indivisible, indivisible, and just as our own.
Moving into, we have minutes, treasury warrant and payroll. We have approval of treasury warrant twenty four dash twenty six and payroll twenty four dash P W twenty six.
Make a motion to approve treasury warrant twenty four dash twenty six and payroll twenty four dash P W twenty six.
Motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Motion and second, questions, comments, concerns? We'll have a couple more twenty, um, twenty four warrants to close out, correct?
Yes. Usually there's two more.
Yeah.
One more payroll and I think two more vendor warrants.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Austin, I know you said we're good with the historical commission invoices that we had to pay. What happens to that account, if you will, if there's left over? Does that just get closed out?
Yes, um, so in all likelihood, if there's any monies left over in, in the grant account, we'll either just have to send a check back or they'll find a way to take it back somehow.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Roger, I.
Calvin, I.
Waitman, I. We have approval of meeting minutes from our June tenth, twenty twenty four meeting that was a regular meeting. Included in my packet. And yep, everyone was present. Uh, I think Tom, you left it.
I was zoomed, right?
Yeah. A little early, I think we didn't go much later. Yep.
Uh, make a motion to approve meeting minutes from June tenth, two thousand twenty four. Regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second, questions, comments, concerns? We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Roger, I.
Calvin, I.
Waitman, I. Thank you, Tamika, for providing those. We have a six o'clock poll hearing for National Grid. Um, I will open the hearing, it's a public hearing, um, poll hearing for National Grid at Forest Hill Drive. Um, I believe we have National Grid representation on Zoom. Um, this is a, um, installation of a poll on Forest Hill Drive, I believe. And in the information we have that the location has been staked and inspected by D P W Director Kloski. You may have the floor, sir.
Um, yeah, my name is Colton Marshall, I'm representing from National Grid. Uh, the purpose of this poll is a, uh, it's a support poll backing up the poll eighteen. Currently, that, um, poll is supported by a tree located across the street. So, we are adding this poll so that we can remove that what's called a tree guy. That is not to standards, so, um, this is part of the phase one of the Harmony Place at Rutland Heights. A bunch of poles are being replaced and in doing so, we need to bring it up to standards. So, this is a, uh, support poll that's being added.
Um, is the plan to take, not take the tree down that's currently the tree support? It's just to kind of bring it up to standards and have a, a pole support versus a tree support?
Yes, correct.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here from the public that has questions or concerns about the poll? Name and address, please.
Yeah, uh, Richard Moore's Forest Hill Drive. Where is this poll going to be? I, I got the letter, but it doesn't say anything, you know?
Yep. Um, it's, do you, Austin, do you have the?
Oh, where is it? Yeah.
Right here.
Oh, this is, as you come in the row right here?
Yeah.
And that's the poll right here?
Yes, sir.
Correct, it's on the corner of Maple Ave and Forest Hill Drive.
And that, that's just a support poll, I didn't know that, okay.
Right.
Jeez, I didn't know there's a poll right here.
Thank you, David.
All right, now wait a minute.
So for any one in the public that's watching, it's on, um, the intersection of Forest Hill Drive and Maple Ave. On, it looks like the southern side of that intersection, um, is Poll Eighteen, which is already existing. And this would be just a support poll, um, a little bit to the kind of west of it, by the looks of it. Is that kind of my understanding?
Leah, if anybody would like a visual, it's also posted on the website, on the Select Board page, if anybody wants to see a picture of them.
Thank you. Tamika, just wanted to remind everyone that it is posted on our, um, Select Board website, um, through the town website, if anybody is interested in seeing it. But, that's a good question, sir, so you may keep it, that's.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yep. Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments or concerns or anything? Anyone else from the public have any questions or comments or anything? Um, and we know Chris is okay with the location as far as snow removal and everything as well, like, um, any sort of maintenance that needs to happen?
Yes. I do have one question, and this might just be my, uh, not knowing, uh, everything about this. But there's a, a paragraph in the petition that's also asking for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires, and the above are intersecting public ways. Do you anticipate needing to do any of that work? And is that meaning, are you talking about going across any of the roads or?
Uh, that, that's just our general.
General language. Okay.
Yeah.
You don't anticipate needing to do any of that for this particular poll?
No.
Thank you.
Just for your information, there usually is a separate, um, petition for any buried wires or anything else.
That they would need to eventually.
So this is titled Order for Polling and Wire Locations. The separate would be buried wire and something else.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments or anything for the public hearing? Hearing none, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, we'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Roger, I.
Calvin, I.
Waitman, I. Um, I would entertain a motion to, um, authorize the, um, poll as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, we'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Roger, I.
Calvin, I.
Waitman, I. You're good to go, we'll sign the documentation and Tamika will have it.
Thank you very much, you folks have a nice night.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Um, moving into public comment, we have, um, Patty Inwood here from Hope Lives Here, so I will give you the floor. Name and address, please.
Patty Anne Inwood, one Haven Hill Road, and I'm here representing Hope Lives Here. I'm gonna stand, because I'm a stander, a teacher. So, thank you so much, I'm also here with Karen Phillips, um, proud Rutland resident and also our administrative assistant for Hope Lives Here. So, I'm always excited to come and talk about what we have going on. Um, and always want to say thank you, our Rutland community has been fantastic in support of our organization. We're a grief support organization that started here in Rutland after my son Luke passed away in twenty fifteen. Um, we are going to be six years old in April, which is insane. But we saw over three hundred people last year in our, our Holden location and one hundred of them are new. So, it's incredible to me that people are finding us and getting the help that they need. We currently have four support groups and as we were talking about earlier, we are thrilled that we're going to be offering support to teens in this area as well, because that's much needed right now. There's, with regards to suicide and overdose, a lot of families need more support than is available. And right now, when they reach out to us, we're sending them out to Arlington and Framingham. So it'll be really wonderful for us to be able to help right here, so we're excited about that change. And it's because of the support of our communities that we're able to do that. So, big thank you to everyone watching and to all of you. So I always come, we come to let you know that we're planning our big walk. It's going to be our fourth annual Walk to Remember. It's on Sunday, October twentieth. And we have already, uh, spoken with Karen Cappucci at the school. We have talked to the police department and we're here to see you all tonight, just to firm things up and let you know that that will be happening. Last year, we had almost four hundred participants, which is nuts. Um, the police did a wonderful job getting everyone down and into the rail trail. And we made our way around, but it was incredibly successful and is a very big fundraiser for us. So, I don't know if forty thousand dollars sounds like a lot to you people, but it's a lot to us in our world. And that's, that allows us to pay Karen. We also have a marketing assistant now, which is fantastic. And then that provides all of the resources that we need, because everything we do, we do for free. So we don't charge anyone, so it's really wonderful that we're able to do that. So we've had amazing weather, we have fantastic volunteers that make all of this possible and we're really excited about it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work that you do, I know it's really an unmet need kind of in society as a whole, but it's, and I think sometimes what chooses gets, you know, we kind of forget ourselves sometimes. Um, because we're not one of the big cities, but we have some of the bigger city, um, struggles and challenges. And so I think the, the supports and services that, that you provide are immensely needed and very well respected. And I appreciate the work that you do.
Well, thank you so much, and we're, we're really excited that, you know, we're starting to work more with some of the funeral homes in our area. The, um, Miles has been fantastic, uh, in working together with us and we're very appreciative of that. But even with the high schools, we have a group at the high school now. And, uh, Tohonto, where I teach, out in Boylston, we, they had a, um, a death by suicide that was a former student of mine and invited us in to provide them with resources and with support and lots of hugs. You know, and it, it's just really wonderful that we're creating this network, um, to support families and, uh, everyone and the communities when we need it. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna ask if you're in, if, uh, if the schools like, um, have your information as a resource through the guidance office or anything? I know Bay Path had a significant loss earlier this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and everything, so.
Yeah, I think we haven't done a lot of outreach, but the word of mouth is certainly there. And I think it's with, there's some wonderful organizations that specialize when, uh, there's a crisis in the schools. But sometimes it's, it's just nice to have a personal touch, you know, and know that it's someone that's walked that walk and is able to come in and help. So, we just really meet people where they need to be and if someone reaches out, then we're gonna support them for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, are you set up to offer help for individuals who might be suicidal, who have said they would?
So, we have resources available to try and point you in the right direction. We are peer-to-peer support, so we're not therapists, um, we're not doctors.
Right.
But we, we have a protocol in place ourselves if we think someone needs that assistance. For the teen group, for example, we are, we do have a therapist on hand to help us out in those situations. But, we're gonna encourage everyone to use nine eight eight, that helpline, um, or help them find a therapist to get the help that they need. But, it's just, it's hard right now, there's very few resources for families that need it. Yeah, thanks for asking.
So, I think, um, Sunday, October twentieth at the, the traditional kind of five K
Yeah.
from Glenwood down to the rail trail and then back up through the neighborhood and up Main Street.
Up past the cemetery, yeah?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And around the corner and it's, it was, it just went really well last year, it really did. It's beautiful because we put signs up for all of our loved ones and so a lot of people will have a moment along the walk, uh, to remember their loved one and it's just a really, really beautiful, beautiful day.
Yeah. Um, do you anticipate doing food trucks or anything at the walk? Or I think last year you had gone off-site, right, and like had a gathering?
Yeah, shout out to Lala Catch. Brian, if you're watching, um, so we, uh, went there a lot, we've been there for two years now and they just do a phenomenal job. Uh, they're very closely connected to one of our volunteers, Donna Byrne, who usually comes with us tonight, but she's watching grandchildren this evening. But, they've always invited us up and we usually do that, it's just kind of nice to have a second location for people to go to and unwind and, yeah, separate some of the, the har, the memories and the hardship with a little bit more joyfulness afterwards.
Yep, no, that's, I, for, kind of just for the event itself, you know, kind of understanding for us what the, the in, in, event entails. But I know from the past couple of years, it's been the, the walk, run and gathering there and then, you know, off-site socializing and decompression and everything.
You got it, thank you for bringing that up, Leah, I appreciate it.
Anyone else have questions or anything? I mean, I think you have been through it, you've already talked to Chief Monaco, I think, and I don't know if you've talked to Chief Knight, if he has anything, um. Um, but it sounds like, and if, you know, Dr. Cappucci's on board with it and everything, I think, um, letting us know and we can add it to the calendar. Um, and do you have a fund rate, like?
We're, we're gonna go live on our website.
Okay.
Uh, we usually go after, right after the Fourth of July weekend. Get everyone through that and then we start.
Have a blast.
Yeah, and then we start.
Okay. So maybe we can, you know, link on, you know, on the event website, you know, if it's an event.
Oh, I love that, thank you so much, that would be awesome.
If the board measures that.
We'll email with the link when it goes live and we'll take care of that. That sounds awesome, thank you, Tamika.
So that way if people want to register or sign up or, or whatever.
That's awesome, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for all the work that you do and, like I said, I know it's a much-needed resource in Rutland and the greater community. So, you're serving a lot of people, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think that you need anything formal from us, it's, you know, thank you for letting us know and we'll try to, I'll add it to my list to kind of, as we get closer, you know, the second half of July, just as a reminder and add it in my updates and everything.
Sounds good.
So that it stays in front and center for people.
Sounds wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Is there anyone else for public comment? On Zoom or in person? Nope, okay. We will move into member comments, announcements and town administrator update. Um, we have a, the Fourth of July activities start on Friday. And it's crazy. Um, so Friday, the twenty eighth, um, there's, the flyer, the tri-fold flyer is all around town, um, if anybody needs it. Um, the events are also on the website, in the Fourth of July website. Um, so the Fourth of July website is Rutland MA dash Fourth of July dot org. But it links through our website as well, the town website. Um, Friday, the twenty eighth, we start, there's the bonfire at Lilac Hedge from five to eight, the Midnight Riders are playing from six to nine. Um, the Saturday, the twenty ninth, are the Junior Olympics, starting at nine thirty in the morning, the Anne Marie Gordon Junior Olympics. Here, um, I think registration starts at eight thirty here on Memorial Field. The Briggs Family is sponsoring the volleyball tournament that starts at eleven. The ba, bike and doll carriage parade, um, is at eleven here on the Sunny Common in front of the churches. The Historical Society is having a lemonade social. Um, the Girl Scouts are sponsoring the lip sync on the Town Common. Um, and then there is a town, uh, town concert, Triple Tribe, from six to nine. Sunday is the road race, um, registration begins at eight thirty AM. Uh, kids' race is at nine thirty and adults begin at ten. That's up here at the Town Common this year, back to the, the regular common, down to Kenwood and up, right?
Kenwood Drive, off there.
Yeah. Um, Wednesday, July third, is the chicken barbecue, uh, fundraiser for the Fire Brigade. There are tickets available, they'll be sold at the barbecue. There are also pre-sale tickets available at the marketplace.
And the pharmacy.
And the pharmacy and online. Um, that's six to nine, I believe, in front of the library.
Four to six.
Four to six, sorry, thank you, I'm reading it here and I, um, four to six. Um, the Lions Club is a fundraiser, their strawberry shortcake is four to nine, that's where I got it. Um, and that's sponsored by the Rutlands Lion Club as fundraiser on the Town Common. Um, the band for the night is The Flock from seven to ten thirty in the gazebo. Fireworks begin at nine twenty. If there's rain, it would be Friday, July fifth. And then, for the fourth, which is Thursday, is the celebrity pancake breakfast at the Council on Aging. Um, at the Community Center, the building on Glenwood, um, eight AM to eleve, eleven AM, eight AM to eleven AM. Um, I believe tickets are on sale through the Council on Aging.
Yes.
Um, and should be available at the breakfast as well, unless they sell out, so go early. Um, and then the parade begins at two o'clock here in the center of town, it's the seventy-sixth annual parade. And Rutland celebrates happily ever after with the grand marshals Paula and Brian Stitson. Parade registration, anyone is able to put in for a parade, uh, uh, float is eleven AM to twelve thirty AM, um, up here at Na Quag and Central Tree. Um, and come out and have fun. Um, again, this, I kind of blew through all the information, but it's a, a separated, because the fourth is on a Thursday. So, this upcoming weekend, there's a whole bunch of activities and then the third and the fourth are the fireworks and parade. And all that good stuff. So please come out and show your support, support the nonprofits, this is a big, big fundraiser for the, the Cub Scouts, the Congregational Church, the Lions Club, the Fire Brigade. Um, it's one of their big fundraisers for them to continue to help the community, so, um, please. And then, of course, the Fourth of July is a volunteer-led and fundraised opportunity. So, if you want to keep it going, support them as well. Um, I think we've had a busy end of school, everything, kids are back, the pool has been busy, we've had some crazy heat. Please, in this heat, check on your neighbors, check on your friends, check on your relatives. Um, we had some cooling centers set up, usually it's the library during business hours, um, town hall, uh, the annex, um, the community center and always, public safety are always available. Um, but the pool, I think, has been selling out, which is good, um, as well. So please, 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 keep an eye on your neighbors, um. So, anyone else have comments or questions? Anything? Austin, I will go into your town administrator update.
Uh, good evening, thank you. Uh, just want to congratulate Communications Director Michael Moriarty for another successful grant program for FY twenty-five through the state nine one one department's development grant program. Uh, this year, uh, Rutland Regional Dispatch has been awarded, um, just over one point one million dollars uh, for two separate projects. One is to offset, this is, um, a recurring thing for communities, offset the Town of Warren's FY twenty-five assessment. Um, this is the third and final year of the offsetting of Warren's assessment. So, next fiscal year, they will, uh, fully absorb that within their respective budget. The remaining balance is for the replacement of the center's, um, CAD system, computer-aided dispatch system. Um, completely modernizing the system, um, for dispatch and also with our partner, uh, community and public safety partner. So just want to congratulate the director for another successful year, does a really great job of bringing, uh, grants off at cost. Uh, construction project on the public safety facility in the library is continuing, continuing, well, fairly smoothly. I think we're finding a lot of things for an old roof that needed work a long time ago. Um, parapets on the library have been rebuilt, um, I believe ice and water shield has successfully been installed. That, that, the library is about sixty to seventy percent done at this point. Uh, public safety facility has a lot more work. Uh, masonry exterior has had some significant challenges. Believe they just, uh, finished rebuilding the, the cupola today. Um, that's probably about forty percent complete at this point. Um, and we need some real wood in here, only a few change orders have been submitted at this point. But again, it's early. Um, you will notice a piece of hardware in the annex, uh, several years ago, I believe it was twenty nineteen, a town meeting approved the, uh, purchase of a plotter, which is a, uh, wide-format printer for the land use department. Um, which includes planning, community development, building, health, um, to provide, provide for the ability to print, copy and scan large format, uh, documents, plans, things like that. We're also, um, planning on using it for signage. Um, interior, exterior, exterior, one of the things we've noticed when you walk in, especially into the annex, people seem lost and don't know where to go. So, simple things like that, we can use that printer for, for signage. Uh, we completed that purchase, it was actually under budget, so we have some money remaining in that article. Uh, the municipal services facility is, is cruising along, uh, the space, space needs analysis for the town hall, recreation depart, Recreation and Safe Place, Council on Aging and the Dispatch, the analysis has been completed. Um, and we've just received some very early draft concepts today of what that would look like in terms of a space. Um, we're actually meeting this week to review those concepts, um, and then we'll proceed presenting to C I P C um, and Select Board for your further consideration and blessing. Uh, unfortunately, we did not receive any successful bids for the Public Works road materials. Uh, we'll either likely have to procure off a state contract, which isn't always the most competitive for these materials. Uh, or, um, in working with Director Kloski, we may go out to bid for certain materials that are a little bit more competitive. But unfortunately, we did not receive any bids that we did last Thursday. Uh, we had kickoff last week for the security installation project for the three schools. Uh, they'll be, um, starting to deliver some of the materials in the schools this week. Uh, installation beginning in about two weeks, um, and they're shooting to be completed uh, for right around, if not just before, the start of school. Um, at least all the interior work will be completed and the exterior work as needed, so they don't interfere with, um, school operations. We also met with Phoenix Communications and Access Engineering Group, uh, to begin the implementation discussion for our fiber installation project. We did receive approval from Verizon. Um, one of the things you may have noticed in that poll petition, um, tonight is there's about two sentences in every poll petition which allows for municipal use. Um, that'll, that, one saves us costs, so we don't have to essentially pay for rights to be able to fix structures to those polls. Um, the problem is, is a lot of these polls are very old, so there's some extensive research that's being done from Phoenix and Access uh, to assist us in that, but we did receive preliminary approval from Verizon and we're just waiting, like we all are, on National Grid to get back to us. Uh, and just, um, just to give folks an update, uh, we are meeting this week, um, Police Inspection Services, myself, Planning Department will be meeting with, um, representatives from, uh, the Rutland House of Pizza Building. As, uh, I noted in my, um, communication to you folks, um, there's some disagreement on if the building needs to be demolished at this point, so we're meeting with the insurance company and also representatives from those, um, from that building, uh, to continue those discussions. One of the things, one of our primary concerns right now is, is food. Um, I don't know if it's been removed yet, are you aware of that, chief? It was supposed to be removed within seven days of an order issued last week. I had heard over the weekend that it was going to be removed, it sounds like it hasn't, so that's one of our main concerns, mostly because of rodents. Um, as of, it's my understanding, there's been an issue downtown, so we're looking to address that first, but also just want to make sure that the building is secure, especially as we have, you know, hundreds, if not thousands of people downtown. We really want to make sure that that building is secure. And then ultimately, um, we, again, do believe that the building, uh, is unsafe and needs to be demolished, so. That's it for my report, happy to take any questions you may have.
On the last issue, did the insurance company state why they felt it was not totally?
It's a cheaper payout.
What?
It's a cheaper payout.
Well, I know that, I mean, factually.
No, they, they don't, they haven't even gone in the building with a structural engineer.
Okay.
They're just saying they can just cosmetically repair it and move on.
Insurance one oh one.
Ultimately, the authority having jurisdiction is the town's local building inspector. Will overrule anything the building, the, um, insurance company says, so we have the final say as, as a town.
I don't know if I should ask you or the, um, Health Department, how bad is the rodent problem there?
Um, if the food that's in this building is not removed quickly, it's going to be a very big issue. Very big.
I'm, I'm seeing Fourth of July and rodents running around, so.
Yes, that's concerning.
That's why.
Yep.
Don't want that.
Yep.
If I may to tack onto that, if they don't remove it as they're supposed to, do we have any recourse to take action?
So, yes, so there is a provision of the general laws that allows for, um, one, if there's non responsiveness from a property owner. Uh, or an inability to complete demolition or anything within our orders within the timeframe that's established. The town does, um, have the ability to conduct the work herself and lean the costs associated with it against the property. Obviously, we're not there yet, but we're aware that legally we're allowed to do that. I think we're just trying to work in good faith, obviously, with the business owners and property owner at this point.
Well, I just, it's concerning for the building itself, but it's still residential area, I can imagine there's potential impact to other.
That was extended to August first?
Yes.
But that's separate from the food removal.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's until the twenty eighth for the food removal.
June?
Yes.
Is the owner local? Is it a local owner?
I don't believe so.
Oh, so you're around the, yeah.
I mean, I think I had asked just that there's collaboration between kind of the building inspector, the fire chief. And the Board of Health and Health Inspector, just to make sure that everybody is kind of on the same page and it's not order after order after order. I think my concerns are definitely the food for sure, as well as the, the building itself, knowing that we have the Fourth of July. And people are coming, more and more people are going to be coming into town, so to ensure that the building is as secure as it can be. Um, and unfortunately, you know, it's a tough, I think, it's a tough loss for town, right? That building has been in so many historic pictures and everything. Um, not to say that that's the, the ultimate, but I think that there's significant. It's fallen into significant disrepair over the years as well. Um, and so I think it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that we'll have a Fourth of July with a boarded up building in, in everything. Um, but thank you, Chief Nyip and the department and all the responding groups. That helped keep it from turning tragic because it's, could have gotten, yeah, real bad. So, thank you. Um, I had a couple other questions if, um, for the warrant offset. I assume that they're aware that they're going to be assessed going forward, their full amount, that their offset is. I just know that sometimes with the dispatch contracts that the communities are.
Yeah, typically that, especially when a community joins Regional Dispatch, it's kind of disclosed upfront.
Yeah.
Uh, especially from state nine one one department, they want more and more of these regionalization, especially for dispatch, opportunities to occur. So that's kind of their incentive to get them in, um, but they make it clear from the beginning. Now, if the community decides not to budget appropriately, that's, that's on them. But, um, you know, this is revenue that comes into the dispatch center, comes in as a state grant, we charge against that.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to make sure that they were aware, that Warren was aware that it's.
Yeah.
Not that it's necessarily Rutland's responsibility, but as a regional dispatch to ensure. Um, and for the road material bids, was there a sense as to why we didn't get any bids? Do you think it's just the market, like?
No idea, we didn't even receive any responses, like, as to why they didn't, um, it could be timing. Um, I mean, there's, there's probably several, um, reasons why. Um.
I didn't know if it was worth putting out a, again, or if it's just better to kind of do it as.
Yeah.
Specific materials, I don't know.
I mean, the, the biggest thing that espe- especially I think that we're, we're buying and was included in those bids were, um, like salt and sand. Um, so I think we will likely end up going out to bid for that again. Um, larger materials, like ten inch riprap. Um, you know, we don't necessarily have to buy a lot of it, and especially in bulk, but so we may have to just buy that off the state contract as needed or from a local vendor. Um, just keeping in mind some of our procurement thresholds that we have to be mindful of, but, um. Yeah, not a, not a good understanding of why, so. Uh, but I, I think that there is some opportunities to reinvent a little bit, maybe split it up a little bit, so it's not a comprehensive. List of road materials, um, that is another thing, so we had a water chemicals bid. Um, and we did a whole list of different materials, uh, or of chemicals for the water treatment plant. Um, and we awarded contracts to like five or six different companies because some companies only carry one product, right? So, that may be the case here, some people maybe only specialize in sand, for example, you know, so.
Um, can I ask a staffing slash kind of not staffing specific question? You are a CPO, but is it Chief Procurement Officer, but is there anyone else that's certified in town?
Oh.
Not right now, can we think about strategizing that piece, please, just as thinking? Um, I think in the past, I think Director Buckley had gone through it, just because DPW is often the, the second one in line. I wasn't, I didn't, I wasn't sure if either the chiefs were or not.
Mine's expired. Everything I buy is on a state contract, so.
Yeah, so they're, um, so the, I think the Inspector General's Office, they are mindful of kind of the Rutland situation. Where you end up just having one person who is responsible for now. Um, you only have to have one chief procurement officer, but it's good to have many people to your point certified, so, especially the big spenders. Even off of a state contract, um, it's good practice, I, you know, and I, I kid, but, um. Chief Knight probably has one of the best practices for, for purchasing, he does documentation, he does, I think, a lot of purchasing very well. Um, obviously, we're working with some other departments to encourage better use of purchasing policies, things like that, so. Um, but the Inspector General's Office has, is now offering, um, free or lower cost programs to become certified. Um, which is incredibly helpful for the town of Rutland, we don't have a large professional development budget. Um, so free or cheaper is, is really good, and that's why they obviously introduced that, so. Um, I think we've talked internally about some folks that I think would be good candidates for that, especially if they're. Buying a lot of road materials, for example, so I can think of Public Works, obviously some public safety folks.
I think also, if I may, I think also, um, having a resource for the boards and commissions. Because not that a lot of them are spending above the threshold, but for any that are working towards something. Or, um, to have a resource that, you know, you're, I know you have a, a lot of things going on. So just even if it's another resource as far as best practice, or what, what thresholds need to be for what, or, or whatever.
Well, I, I certainly think, and I, I agree with you, I, I think that we've gotta definitely take a deeper look at just overall our purchasing. Maybe policies and procedures, how they occur. Um, several years ago, I think we had purchase orders, we, we did away with that, however, that is a good practice for purchasing and procurement in general. So there's things like that, that, you know, we can have a little bit more. I wanna use the word control, but just oversight on procurement. Um, and that makes it a lot easier, so even if you have a, you know, one or a handful of certified folks. At least you know what's going through before it gets to the warrant, right?
Yeah.
Uh, cause at, at this point, it's, it's too late. Um, they've already been ordered, su- you know, services have been rendered, supplies have likely been delivered. Um, so getting it kind of upfront, I think would be helpful for a town like our own, so. We'll work on that.
I just know as we start getting into kind of goal setting and reviews and thinking, you know, organization wise and everything.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else?
Sure.
Um, uh. Have you heard of the Attorney General's Office in terms of our bylaws?
Our office has not, it's my understanding the Town Clerk's Office has received the approval from the Attorney General's Office. But we have not been communicated with on the, on approval.
Okay. But it's assuming that they heard that they're all approved, or we don't even know that yet?
Again, I don't know, I haven't seen the communication, I looked up online, it looks like there was some sort of approval that was transmitted, but again, we haven't received it.
Okay, thank you. Is that normal procedure, that it does go through the clerk's office?
Yes, so, uh, submission is a responsibility of the clerk. However, usually there is a copy, um, to select board and any other relevant board or commission that the bylaw, uh, or any ordinance is related to. So, in this case, especially a comprehensive package, um, you know, usually there would be much more than just one party.
Hmm. Do we know when that notice was given to the clerk?
It looked like it was June twentieth that was dated, the letter from the Attorney General's Office.
Okay. Does the board wanna look into that or wait and see when the response will come through?
I mean, I had asked Austin about it and kind of setting this agenda, and at the time, we hadn't heard any official communication. Um, and kind of just through the grapevine, I had heard that, we had heard that they might have been. So then Austin went on the, the website and, and found, but we don't have any official communication. So my hope is that by our next meeting that we definitely have, um, because that's important for us as.
Yeah, I'm just thinking is, should the board reach out to the clerk and just ask what a timeline would be for us to be officially notified?
I mean, we can, that's, that's fine, but.
Sure, I mean, it's, yeah. It's the rule of the board, you could ask me to read, to look into it, you could, um, direct one of you to have that communication. I think either one works, I think it makes sense for elected officials to communicate with each other. Um, so maybe a, a simple inquiry from, if you authorize the chair, to reach out to the clerk to. Instruct some sort of a timeline for when.
My concern is we put a lot of work into it, and I don't want it kind of under the stack of papers, if you will, for the next two weeks till we meet again. So that's my concern.
So I'm happy if the board authorizes, I'm, is comfortable with, I'm happy to reach out to the clerk's office. And I can CC the board as communication, just asking them for a timeline as to when we will receive communication regarding the bylaw packet. So, if the board is medable to that, then we can make a motion.
I make a motion that, uh, Leah, the chair, be authorized to communicate with the clerk. Regarding the timeline of communication regarding the bylaw approvals.
Second.
Motion in the second conversation. Harry?
Second, I.
No, it's a I.
Yeah, but I.
Wait, my eyes. I'll send that this evening. And CC the rest of the board, just so that you have documentation that the message is consented. And obviously CC you and Tamika also. Other, any other questions or concerns or? Okay, moving on to our one day liquor license application. We had seen the application, um, a couple at our previous meeting. Um, and I had just asked that anybody kind of to take it and mull it over if you had any questions or comments or anything. With the hope of coming back to have it approved at this meeting for anything, um. Coming in subsequent to, um, this adoption. Um, I think we kind of had gone through everything. Um, I didn't know if there was any, if there was any conversation about the separate license fee for in-town versus out-of-town vendors. Um, or we had asked that if there were, uh. Nonprofit that they, the nonprofit be listed as well as some sort of documentation to what the entity was going to provide. Um, as a benefit to the nonprofit, um.
Through the chair?
Sure.
Did we, as a board, kind of surmise that the things we talked about would be put in? Cause my, I was trying to think of what else we could do, and the basic things here, wristbands and so forth, I thought is what should be put in. If it's not there already, so, I don't know what else, um, I couldn't think of anything else that would apply.
I think we.
According to the minutes from my last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I think we had, I mean, I think we kind of had said that we were doing the, the wristbands and requiring that the servers be tip certified. And which is trained in alcohol serving, and so there would be some sort of accountability for, um, the individuals who are serving. The individuals who are receiving the drinks, um, just knowing that some of the events are an hour or two hours, and some of the events might be an all day.
Right.
Um.
And we, if I may, Leah, we did take it a step further to require that they provide a copy of their certificate. Not just stating that they are, but actually providing verification of that.
Of the tip certification.
Of the tip certification, yes.
And I think you mentioned, Tamika, that they, they have to carry liquor liability insurance. We don't necessarily have to get a copy of that, or we do?
No, I, I al- already are, asked for that, it's part of our requirements. Um, but this would be taken a step further to require proof of not just general liability, but liquor liability. Which was a recommendation of our insurance company.
And these would be applied whether you're in town or out of town, this whole set of rules.
Correct, yep.
And the liquor liability would be if the event is taking place on town property.
So, we should be requiring liquor liability regardless of where the event is taking place.
Okay.
However, if it's on town property, they need to list the town as an additional insured on the certificate of insurance, insurance that they submit.
It does read that way, it's just a little confusing because it's a semicolon, um, so under the required forms to submit with the application on page two.
Yeah.
Um, number two, cer- certificate of insurance, parentheses, must have minimum coverage of one million dollars and liquor liability, then semicolon. If the event is taking place, taking place on town property, the town of Rutland must be listed as an additional insured. Makes sense, but just that semicolon is a little.
Okay, do you want, so do you want me, if I change it to a period, does it make sense? Do you want me to change the wording?
Maybe a period, and then if the event is taking place on town property, that the town must be listed as an additional insured. So that it's to, you know, that regardless of where the event's taking place, if we're issuing a one day liquor license, they have to have the liquor liability. Period, then if it's on town property, the town must be listed as an additional insured. Does that make sense, Harry?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
So if I, just so I understand, so say, as an example, nonprofit, say Little League, Little League wants to throw an event. If they wanna serve beer, they have to get the one day, one day, plus tip certified. Plus the insurance, and if they do it on Memorial Field, they also have to include the town.
Correct.
Insured, so.
Yes.
All for the one day.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I think that's why, I think because of all these requirements, and a lot of these are best practices based on our insurance recommendations. Um, is why more and more, um, entities are partnering with. One of the other, um, entities that are able to get a one day and then have some sort of partnership. To show that then they're getting a percentage of sales or, or whatever, because.
But I feel like we never, we never made that, that, that's still a little gray, that, how that works, but.
Does, did the Little League used to do that, or did they do that?
New application, I'm sorry, Harry, I didn't.
Sorry, Harry.
No, 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 I was gonna say, you had mentioned the Little League doing that.
Oh, no, no, I just use them as, as an example, yeah, I just, I just put, yeah, I just mentioned that.
Um, so in the new application, we're requiring that the organization selling, excuse me, the vendor selling the alcohol. Provides some sort of documentation of what the agreement is between them and the nonprofit. To show that the nonprofit is truly going to be benefiting from this type of event.
Hmm.
We're gonna require that now. And then, um. I, I haven't gotten any, like, conversation really about the, we had chosen just to, for the out-of-town vendors. To kind of double the in-town vendor licensing fee, um, I don't know how the board feels about that. The other option, and some of that is, I think, I hope that this board can also work towards Fourth of July. And, um, like events committee policy as far as ch- kind of prioritizing, um, the.
Kind of prioritizing um the nonprofits and the Rutland businesses. Um and so that was one way to kind of try to prioritize the in-town business, essentially of the in-town businesses a discount kind of. Um because they're in-town businesses and they're already paying taxes and everything in town. Um so that's, that was that rationale and that way it just is essentially double, so whenever one fee is set. It is double.
Sounds.
Um.
How do we determine out-of-town business, by their certificate or by the resident, so to speak?
No, it would be whatever business address they use on their application, so they have to, if you're applying for the one day. Um you have to put your business address as well as your business tax ID, so it's wherever that business is located, so. If the person resides in Rutland, but they operate their business out of Holden, they would be considered an out-of-town vendor, because they're not paying taxes here in Rutland for their business.
And so what do we need now?
Is the board comfortable with, I, this is essentially application slash policy, so we can amend it at any time, I think it's a lot more comprehensive. We had, I think a few words ago, we had done a lot of work on it and then through doing more and more of the one days. We realized that there was a need to have some more fine-tuned um instance, I think the other thing. Tamika was, I think Jen had brought up changing the word guidelines to. Something else, wasn't it?
Yes, you did say that and I apologize, I forgot to change it on the draft that I resent out to you guys, but I do have that in my notes to change it to um policy, not guideline.
Yeah, thank you, sorry, that's.
No, thank you for reminding me.
So you're looking for a motion to approve?
Yeah, is the board comfortable approving as presented, I mean with the changes that we just spoke about?
When would this take effect, as of tonight when it's approved?
So anything coming in from tonight on, so we have an a one-day application in front of us that was submitted before this. So that wouldn't be held to this standard, but anything coming in after this would be.
Yes, and I'll make sure that it's up on the website, I'm also gonna reach out to our most um frequent vendors that applied for one days, so that they're aware of this moving forward. Um it's probably not gonna affect too many folks for the season, cause I think most of the one days have already been issued for the events for the summer, but. There could still be things that come up in between and we'll make sure that everybody's adhering to the new policy.
And I think we can ask Ryan if you don't mind if for the fourth of July, cause I think he's the only one so far that we have for the one day. Uh liquor license for the fourth of July, for the third.
Yep.
If he would be amenable to doing the wristbands as is in here, I think on the Zoom he had mentioned that he probably would be. He's not held to that policy, but um if he would be willing to consider that.
Sure.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Yeah, good.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the revised or updated. Uh one-day alcohol beverages license application for the town of Rutland.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional conversation? We'll call Harry.
Second and I.
Second and I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, and I.
Waitman I, thank you Tamika for and Austin for all the work back and forth with this also, I appreciate it.
It was a collaborative effort, so I'm glad we came to a a place where everybody feels comfortable.
And thank you board for being amenable to it and the conversation and everything. And like I said, it is policy, so if we decide we wanna revisit it at any time, anyone feel free to reach out and we can get it back on. Um now, under new and special business, operating as the Board of Public Works. We have a stormwater abatement request, it's provided in our packet. Um. The. Um. Resident is stating that they lack impervious parking facilities on their um. Property, the stormwater, just to reiterate, was sent out to developed parcels.
Correct.
Um.
And this parcel is developed.
And I was gonna say, this is showing as a um developed parcel, so it was not taken into account any sort of. Um. Impervious or parking structures or anything, it was just if the parcel was developed, it was how I believe. A previous board had said it. Um. Conversation.
Um. I hate to say this, but uh can somebody read this to me, I'm having a hard time with this writing.
So I ha- I have it as abatement is requested due to assessment of property characteristics that are non-existent. More specifically, the lack of impervious parking facilities, open to inspection if requested.
That was one of my questions is what, I I guess where, what are they basing?
This is all that we received.
Everything, there wasn't anything else provided?
No.
Non-pervious parking, I mean. I don't, I don't understand what that means.
It's not related to parking.
So that's like asphalt or, um so I I think they're claiming because they don't have a like a paved driveway, for example, that they're. Um exempt from this, but as you know, obviously the intent of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund was also for developed parcels, so this has a house on it. Um so it's considered developed.
And this, I mean, the application here says land and building um as description as as well as um. Property types, I just was gonna confirm that there is a structure that it is developed, but I'm sure. Um you guys have.
And.
It is, we just recently assessed it in August of twenty-three.
Uh I was just gonna ask you about the applicant's opinion of value compared to the assessed value by the town.
So I think the assessed value to me is not super important in this because it was a, it was a flat fee per developed parcel, it wasn't based on.
Right, it didn't matter if it was a million-dollar home or. A hundred thousand dollar home, right, as long as it was a structure, everyone paid it.
Well, I was trying to figure out, there's a difference between two fifty and the average value in town. And. Uh a value of how this place is built, so I look at two fifty and I'm two fifty-five and I'm looking like, okay. Maybe he's right here because there isn't a lot of land there, there's not a lot of building there, so how much runoff does he really get?
Yeah, so.
So that's what I'm trying to.
Well, so this is actually um the incorrect application, but I think it was accepted for the purposes of this proceeding. Um there actually is a separate application for abatements um for water sewer and now obviously stormwater. This is not a utility abatement application, um but obviously it was filled out and and accepted for the purpose of, again, tonight. Um so to be honest, on the stormwater utility abatement, there wouldn't even be anything about the assessed valuation because. For the purpose of this discussion, it doesn't matter what their assessed value is, right? As as uh Tom mentioned, everyone's getting or everyone received the forty dollars stormwater utility bill, so, uh but. And I don't wanna digress too much, but there's always gonna be the disparity in between in between, especially for tax purposes, what the town assesses something. And then what people believe that their house is worth. Um we could spend hours talking about how the assessors do their work and get to that assessed value. A lot of it is just simple math and what the state tells us we can and can't do.
How how do they get the forms to fill out, do they come to you your office?
So there's a form available on the website on the Board of Public Works page, it's a utility abatement request form.
Okay.
In this particular case, um this resident went to the assessor's office and was provided with this form and then the assessor's office provided it to us.
Okay.
Um but the form is available on the website, we also have paper copies in town hall and at the DPW.
Do we officially have one specific for the stormwater?
Yeah, the Treasurer Collector's Office made one.
Okay.
There's a separate one now, cause the previous ones that you've um considered were using the existing water and sewer.
Yeah.
Um which obviously those aren't relevant either.
I've, we've seen a different couple of different formats here, so I guess my question for you being. Are are we gonna make sure that they're filling out the correct form and not accepting anything that is not filled out for the correct?
So technically, there's nothing in here that is. Detrimental to the discussion, there's just a lot more information than necessary, so that the stormwater. Um abatement form is simple, right, because the stormwater utility, for the purpose of revenue.
Right.
Um is is fairly simple, so um you know, did they, did they pay it? What's their address, what's their contact information and why do they believe they need an abatement? All this is really just extra, obviously, it's a little different for water and sewer because there's meter readings and. A little bit more um in-depth information that's required, but for this purpose, it'll be.
Yeah, I just didn't know if on the form, if there's like an, does it state on there any developed parcel? Is what is, because again, like they're they're basing it on non-existent property characteristics that they feel they shouldn't, so obviously there's some. Disconnect on what the fee is actually for.
Right.
Yeah, we can add that, that's a, um I I think we'll try to keep it as high level as possible because. I I think we've already had a couple of folks that have asked and said, well, technically mine's not developed because it's not X. Um because I think obviously rightly so, the previous board and town town meeting approved to much more broader sense because stormwater affects everything. Um and itself is fairly broad. Um so but we can put some information that's helpful, I think also some good feedback that we received sending out the bills this year. And the reason why we didn't do it is because we didn't have the utility established, but we, there was no letter or anything with with this bill.
Yeah.
So we get a lot more questions than probably. Necessary.
Yeah.
Or expected, um so I think we're already talking about for next year, some sort of a insert with the bill to explain a little bit more. Why are you getting this?
That it's not linked to water and sewer use u- utility and that it's developed parcels and.
And that, to be honest, that also helps us get our credit for MS four permit.
Right.
Um because we can consider that education and if we're mailing it to, you know, three thousand plus parcels. Um that gets us a lot of credit, so it's kind of. Double dip, I think, well, yeah.
That's good.
Okay.
So he's basically saying something like that, because he doesn't have any parking spaces, he doesn't have any roads, he should be assessed. But it is a developed parcel. Okay.
I think most people just don't understand what it is, why would they, you know, I mean, no one's even heard, most people have never even heard of this, you know?
Well, it's interesting, this is becoming more popular, Rutland was quoted in the Massachusetts Stormwater Co- Coalition. For uh or cited for, um because I think we were the only community this year that established a utility. Um so we received some some kudos for doing that, um and I think there's some communities this fall that are. Kind of, I've actually received a couple of emails already asking, how'd you do it, why'd you do it, things like that, so.
Great.
That's good to hear.
We'll get you on the front page of Stormwater Magazine.
Yeah.
Famous.
Yeah.
So um I I don't, I get the sense from the board that we are not um not amenable to this abatement. Given that it is a developed parcel and the billing was for all developed parcels, but by all means, if I misread the board, please.
No.
Let me know, otherwise I would take a motion. To um deny the appeal because it was assessed based on developed parcels and not. Impervise.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Conversation. We'll call Harry.
Second and I.
Second and I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, and I.
Waitman I and um. Yeah, s- so Tamika, I think you can follow up with.
How can I get with the president to let him know?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're looking one-day liquor license.
So taking off our Board of Public Works hat and putting back on our select board hat, we have a one-day liquor license. I think that this was the outstanding one for the concerts on the common, um the events committee informed me that um. It was coming and we just received it. Ten days ago.
Yeah.
Um and so this is from seven sols for concert uh concerts on the common, the. The weeks that there were vacancies, which was July twelfth, August second and August twenty-third. Um I believe everything has been presented, um we have proof of tips insurance or tip certification. Um this is not a new vendor to town, so um I believe Tamika, they are well aware of.
Yes.
Kind of the the process.
This is an out-of-town vendor, right? So they'll be paying the.
No, cause this was just submitted the.
Okay, so this is the.
It was prior to.
Fair enough, yeah.
Yep. Um.
But they did pay the fee, three separate fees for each date.
Yeah, which all the other vendors had also paid individual.
Each for each date.
Yes, for each license, so. Um and this is just um to reiterate, it's for wine and malt only. Um similar to what we had approved with, I believe we approved for lilac hedge, dolce Vita and. Common grounds later works, so this is similar just for those weeks that there was nobody. Um. Set aside for, that we knew of, events committee knew, but we didn't, so, is there any questions, comments, concerns, conversation? Um and these hours are five to nine, I think the concert is six to nine, they put.
I put six to nine on the license.
Thank you, so that's good to know, alright, any other? I would entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license applications for. Seven sols for July, for the concerts on the common, July twelfth, August second and August twenty-third.
So moved.
Paul, take it.
Paul will take it, do you wanna second it, Tom? We have a motion and a second, conversation. We'll call Harry.
Second and I.
Second and I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, and I.
Waitman I, thank you. Um. And then we have a. Policy for altering outdoor premises, this I believe is kind of due to the um. The recent change in legislation that allows the outdoor, um the alteration of outdoor premises, is that?
That's correct, yes, um and it was at the recommendation of KP Law that the town establish a policy slash process. Um so that if a vendor does or a licensee comes and wants to alter their outdoor premises, then we have um a policy set in place. A fee set in place. So I modeled this on the application that the ABCC was previously using. Um which is, it's exactly the same information, um previously, we did not have a fee established for this, they were just paying a fee to the ABCC. Um so stuck a fee in there, but the amount is certainly up for discussion, the reason that I chose that amount is because. Couple of years ago, the board had set a fee amount for um licensees who were looking to transfer a license. So we had a couple of businesses in town who were purchased by another company and had to switch the name, we set that, or the board set that fee at two hundred dollars, so that's why. I chose it for this, cause it would be the same amount of work involved, um we'd still hold a public hearing, all of those things. Notify butters.
And you feel the two hundred dollars is um sufficient for the public hearing expenses?
Yes.
And I I a lot of the work is kind of on the applicant's side, but I know the office does need to spend some time and so you feel like it's an adequate fee to cover.
I feel like that's fair for, yeah, for what it is, yeah.
Could you possibly give me a quick example of what this would mean, like what what is changing the private like?
So this is exactly what Schultz Farm just did, where they wanted to add outside area, the barn, they wanted to add the. The field so that people could consume alcohol in those outdoor spaces.
Oh, but but it's a permanent structure, it's, so they're just adding on to a business.
It doesn't have to be a permanent structure, so it could be that. Because with a liquor license, it's based on the premises, so if they're initially licensed and it's just the inside of the premise. Then people cannot step foot outside with alcohol, so if they wanted to include a patio area, it could be a grassy area, so it doesn't have to be a structure. But the distinction is that it's outdoor, because if they were to alter the indoor space, that does still have to go through the ABCC.
So add a stage or something like that for, okay.
Yes.
Open up another field or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Um and so this is just, this is our first reading of this, so I'm not gonna ask the board if the board's comfortable, I don't think we need to approve it tonight, but I did want. The board to have the opportunity to kind of see it, similar to what we just did with the one day, take um a a couple of weeks and hopefully we can approve it at our. Next meeting, um and I think we had previous, just so everyone's aware, it it is two sides on the back, it's kind of the. Um required forms to submit and the policy piece of it as well, um which to Tamika's point is kind of what had been. Done on the ABCC side of things as well as what we would do if we were looking at a new application or something.
Right.
To see the, to see the change in space and everything.
So it really doesn't change anything for the applicant, other than taking out that extra step of going through the ABCC. We wanted to make sure that we were still holding a public hearing so that, you know, a butters were notified of the change, you know, it's still gonna go in the newspaper, it's still. it's still gonna come before you guys, um, so really, nothing from that has changed, other than just taking out the ABCC step.
And this is a one-time for each change, if you will, each addition?
Correct, so once it's approved, it gets added to the liquor license as part of the premises, and then unless they're making some sort of substantial change outside of that location, then it, it remains in perpetuity on the license.
And Tamika, can you remind me, if they are licensed for indoor only, but want to add like an outdoor patio space or something, is that, does that still need ABCC approval, or does that include under this, because it's alter, it's considered outdoor premises straight away?
Right, it would just be covered under this.
Okay.
Yep, it's only if they were, say, putting an addition on the building and they were gonna be expanding the indoor space where people are going to be serving or consuming alcohol, then that is something that has to go through both the LLA, the local licensing authority, and the ABCC, but this is specific to just outdoor space. For existing licensees, so they have to have a license that's already been issued by the ABCC in order to go through this process.
Okay. I'll brainstorm, just the, in my head, when I see alteration of outdoor premises, I mean, in my head, I default to there's already an existing outdoor premises. Then when I read in the blue, um, the, you know, the select board may approve alteration of licensed premises to include service of alcohol in outdoor dining areas, that seems clear to me that it can be include, you know, including a new outdoor area as well as modifying existing outdoor area, um, but maybe in the title as well as in the blue, we need to somehow
Sure, we can refine that language.
Again, that it's for both, that it's both, like, creating outdoor space as well as altering existing outdoor space, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, absolutely, we can refine that language, yeah, cause I, I was using what the ABCC was using, and that's like their phrase, it's the alteration
Yeah.
of outdoor premises, but if we need to change that so that it's more, um, conducive to people understanding what that means, absolutely, we can do that.
And even, I think in the blue, we can also just add some language there, cause it says to include service of alcohol in outdoor dining areas, but then also, or um, change in outdoor serving areas, or, or something along, you know, alterations of outdoor serving areas, something, but.
Yeah, we can brainstorm some better language for that.
That's, like I said, just kind of a first pass that I saw. But if anybody else has anything, by all means, send it, you know, kind of through Tamika and we can.
Yeah, let me know, because then I'll make the changes so that, unlike my part due tonight, I apologize, I will make the changes to the draft and then submit the corrected one to you guys next time, so you'll know what you're working with.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, moving on to board and committee charges, reviewing charges for boards and committees prior to the fiscal year twenty-five appointments. Um, so we've had the past few, maybe a few weeks, there's been some, some challenges. We've had some feedback of, from community, um, organizations and entities working with some of the boards and committees. Um, hasn't always been the most favorable interactions, um, in doing work kind of on behalf of the town. And also, I know there's been a couple of boards, or at least one or two, that have had some quorum issues and everything, um, so, um, we, I think Tamika, um, had kind of gone through and pulled what she had for, um, what the office had for, um, board and committee charges, um, and whether they're elected or appointed. Obviously, the select board is only, um, in charge of the appointed committees and kind of what their roles and everything are. Um, I think for a couple of, for a few of them, there was not a specific charge.
Mm-hmm, so we, if I may, this one's a little bit different than the version I sent you on Thursday, cause I received some information between now and then. Um, so I did hear back from the Board of Health, so their charge has been added in there. Um, I heard from Nancy Nichols today that she is working, uh, with the Council on Aging on their charge, um. I've not heard back from the Library of Trustees yet, but it's, it is on their radar, they're aware that the board is looking for it. Um, and I also added in the, the current members that are serving, just cause I know, you know, that may not be information that everybody knows off the top of their heads, so just for you to be aware of who's serving.
Yeah.
And how many vacancies are on each one.
And I know at one point, there had been kind of, um, conversation as far as when the Economic Development Committee was formed and how their charge and RDIC's charge kind of worked together, or, or didn't work together, or how that could be. Um, and in briefly reviewing kind of the Rutland Heights zoning and everything, it seems like RDIC is in the zoning, um, bylaw as being responsible for the HPDD, um, as well as kind of management of the Rutland Heights property. Um, but, um, I don't know if there is conversation as far as kind of, um, at one point, I was under the un- understanding that RDIC was above and beyond, um, the Rutland Heights property, but I think everything that we see in zoning is specific to the Rutland Heights property. Um, then there was questions as to whether it was more of the industrial piece, and less of the, you know, industrial falls under economic development, but not kind of the traditional, what we think of as economic development, um, and so that's a, um.
If I may, I think it was a feeling of the RDIC that they were responsible for more than just the Heights property, but I've been unable to find any documentation that, um, supports that.
Yeah.
Um, as you said, it's clearly stated in the zoning bylaw, and there's actually a, a Heights development, um, bylaw, and that also outlines the responsibilities of the HPDD Review Board, which is a subcommittee of RDIC. Um, but I've not been able to locate anything through the Town Clerk's Office or through the website that states to support what the RDIC had said in the past.
Yeah.
Uh, if I might, try to add a little history, when I sat on the RDIC many moons ago, there was no EDC, there was no other development organization in town, so it became the purview of the RDIC. Yeah, I'm probably going back about twenty, twenty-five years now, it was the purview of the RDIC to oversee all development in town. Uh, whatever business it was, it was a pizza shop that wanted to come in, or if it was a, an Amazon. But truly, the RDIC was industrial, we were looking for the bigger things to do. We were looking for plant and building development, that type of stuff, not so much small retail. So in looking at where the RDIC is, I can see personally from their perspective, if it's a major industrial thing, it goes to RDIC. If it's kind of an economic development, like you have the marijuana shop coming in, things like that, that would kind of go to the EDC. Cause I don't know if the EDC is set up the way the RDIC is to do big projects like that. So that would be only my, that I can add to it of what I see from the RDIC standpoint.
And so, thank you for the, I mean, for the history, um, I think I'm not necessarily looking to kind of, I, I want this board to, to kind of, as we look towards appointments and everything, understand the different roles, and I'm using these two as an example, because these are the ones that we hear the most about, I think from existing committee members as well, you know, as well as kind of the public, but there are a few others that sometimes I think we, um, we're pointing these boards and, and committees, and so they're not doing our specific work, but they're doing the work towards our, towards the town's goals and objectives, and representing the town in all of their communications and interactions with any entities that they're, they're working with. And, um, you know, I know the Historical Commission has had to work very closely with DCR, and that relationship can be a little bit dicey at times, and so it's trying to, to fine tune that and make sure that there's that, that clear communication that you're still a represent, representative of town, and when residents or the public are upset with things, we are the, the select board and the office, town administrator in the office are the ones that hear about it, because we're the appointing authority, and so there needs to be some level of communication and, and everything there, um, and.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Uh, this is my opinion on this, um, I, I know I'm a broken record when it comes to committees and boards in this town, I think there's way too many. I can't speak to twenty-five years ago, maybe it was needed. I don't get that feeling anymore, I think these boards all butt heads with one another, I think the fact that if we have a professional, you know, financial team and a town administrator and, and select board, if we decide we want to do business with somebody, we have to go through and get the approval of another committee is completely absurd, and it, I, I don't see how it does us any good in this town, I mean, we, you know, the people elect us to make decisions, to be leaders. We've provided the town, I think, with some great leadership in department, you know, running departments in this town. We're starting to move in a direction to bring a little prosperity to town, the fact that we have to jump through these, you know, these hoops and all these other committees to do what we're elected to do, which is do what we feel is best for the town, I think is, is ridiculous, and, uh, again, I can't speak to twenty-five years ago, but right now, I just don't see this as, I, I see it as an unnecessary, uh, process going through these boards.
I'll, I'll add to Tom's, I think, and, and I, I don't know a ton about these boards or the, the history, but I think I've heard some of the stories of business opportunities that could have gone in up at the Heights that went nowhere because a single committee decided it wasn't the right fit, or for whatever reason, and that wasn't even brought before the town for further discussion to move forward, so I, I don't disagree that there's.
I, I guess what I'm saying, and I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
Is that I think the board needs to establish a parameter that says, here's the wall, this is your job, this is your job. We don't wanna get into, well, we missed this opportunity because we thought it was yours.
Well, why even have that step?
Huh?
Why even have that step?
Because I've sat down with both boards and I'll tell you, there's a lot of confusion there. There needs to be a wall that says, industrial, that's your job, everything else is EDC.
I think part of what we're saying.
Because I don't think EDC is up to the point of bringing in an Amazon or anything like that.
Neither was RDIC.
I think RDIC has some experience with what they've been going through. I'm not gonna argue with the makeup of the board, I'm just saying that the RDC, that committee is a wall there that says, you're industrial, do your job as industrial, you're EDC, but right now, there is nothing, it's like they're both, and, and I hear it from both sides. So I just think it's the board's job to say.
Which board, us?
Yeah, us.
Yeah, oh yeah.
That says, here's what your line is, don't cross it, here's what you do.
And I think that's fine, I think that's fine, to have a clear distinction on who's got jurisdiction over what. My concern is, I don't want, I, I want there to be some other input besides that one single board to say yes or no, we're not gonna bring this in, it, I feel like it needs to come.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't think, I don't see why they have a say, so to speak, at all, I mean, they can have an opinion.
Before. Not necessarily before us, but. I mean, it's town property, so there should be more input besides one board.
Yeah.
On whether or not an opportunity that comes in is a good option.
And, and I agree, but perhaps we missed an opportunity to really hold them accountable. You know, once every six months, they come in here, they see us, they say something. We have to hold these committees more accountable.
And maybe that's part of this charge.
And that's the board's job to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's part of this charge, we update it and.
You know?
And that's part of the reason I asked to have all the charges put together and collated and understand a little bit of the history of, of the ones that are kind of, that we hear the most kind of conversation about, also, I think when RDIC was established, there was no town planner. Um, and so now.
But the town was a different place, there's no question about it, that was different.
And, so, like I said, I I am, that's part of the reason I wanted to have the, the charges put together, and that way we can sit, we can have this conversation. And what do we see before we do these appointments, so that the, the people that we're pointing to are understanding what, what our charge is, I know I've had individual conversations, and I think even in some of the public meetings, now that the, the Heights property has been kind of paid off, in the sense that that prop, that large chunk of property has been sold and that loan has essentially been paid off, is there value to going back to the public and saying, what do you see? Town has changed a lot in the fifteen, eighteen years since the property was put before the town, and that the original master plan was done, is there value to saying, what's town's preference for the remaining parcels up there? Is it quick sell and develop right away, is it, you know, hold it for town, town use, is it, is it a mixed use? Is it a public-private partnership? I, I don't know, but now that there's not that, that loan dollar hanging over us anymore, is there value to that or not? Again, I think.
Uh, and, and I think you're right, but I come back to the board, and we say, we haven't heard from you in six months, what's going on? Tell us what you're doing, tell us what your thought process is, where you're going, what kind of business do you have?
Yeah, it should be somebody.
And that's, you know, uh, Austin can do that too, cause he go, he is, he is the ex-official, he sits on committees, he gets to do that. But we're the board, we actually need to hold them, their feet to the fire and say, what's going on?
Yeah.
What has happened with RDIC since the development has gone in? Now, this has been going on for years, so what else has happened with them? And I'm not picking our RDIC, I'm just saying, the board needs, if the town wants to see some growth, the board has to take the, the lead and say, what's going on?
If I may, through the chair, Harry, and I agree with you, I know what you're saying, but hypothetically, how does it hurt the town by getting rid of it? I, I mean, I don't understand, it's just an extra step, it's nothing against any person on these boards. I have no doubt they're all, you know, they want the best for the town like we do, but it's, to me, it's just an extra step that slows us down in a possible, I mean, a, a perfect example, last conversation, I can't remember when it was, one of the meetings, we talked about marketing the two properties on Maple, and the RDIC was totally against it, because they wanted to wait for one project to be done. To me, now, again, I'm not approving this by any means, but to me, that doesn't make any sense. Why would you hold property back from being possibly sold, or, 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 you know, at least bring ideas? They sit on this with this, oh, well, we'll do it later, well, later's gone, been twenty-five years, you just said, nothing's been done.
Let me tell you something, I'm not, I am not arguing with you when it comes to the people on the committee, you know, it's not, it's not.
It's not personal against them.
The process for RDIC is sound for what it's supposed to do.
But wait, how can you say that? Nothing's, nothing's been done, how can you say it's sound?
Again, I come back to the people on the committee, are they doing, if not, then it's up to us to replace them? Or putting some people that will do it, or held their feet to the fire, bring in here, open meeting, tell me the number of companies that have applied for business here and why you haven't accepted them. That's our job, you know, don't just say, well, we're just gonna get rid of it, or, I, I think that's, that's a quick approach, but I don't think it's the approach that the town should be doing, cause we need to develop property, they have some experience. I don't think EDC is ready to do that yet, I don't think they're up, I know we have all this other stuff, but give them a chance this year, hold their feet to the fire this year.
It's been twenty-five years, Harry.
No, it hasn't been, because.
Well, you said twenty-five, I.
No, no, I said I sat on the committee twenty-five years ago. I didn't say that we got the property twenty-five years ago, we had development, I didn't say any of that, that didn't happen until recently that we've had this property for development, last twelve years, so I haven't sat on there for a long time. But any other committee out here that isn't doing their job, we'd be saying the same thing about. So if the events committee isn't doing their job, let's get rid of them, that's not, to me, that's not the way you work at the town. Let them hold their feet to the fire, if they can't do the job, then look at them again.
But, so I, a couple, if I may, a couple, Tamika, hold on, a couple things.
That's my.
No, no, and a couple of things, I think I've talked to our current town planner, John Charbonneau, and I talked to our previous town planner at the CMRPC dinner thing, Dave George, and both of them did reiterate that there is value to waiting until the property is not fully developed, but a little bit more developed because, to market it, um, the Maple Ave properties, because it will likely in the scheme of financial, commercial property value should significantly boost the value of the land, once there's a little bit more developed, not waiting until the end of the project, but I just wanted to put out there that both, two different town planners have, have commented that.
And, and I would agree, but from my financial perspective, I look at risk loss, we're gonna wait five years till this property is fully developed. How much money could we have collected in that time to make up for the increase in the equity? How much money could we have collected in that time to make up for the increase in the equity balance? That's what I wanna see, that's what the RDIC should be doing, looking at that kinda stuff. I don't know if I'm right or wrong. But to me, what makes the most financial sense for the town, and they should be working on that.
And part of my wanting to put the the boards and committees kind of charges on our agenda is to, it it sounds like this board is amenable in wanting to to work with the boards and commissions that, and not specifically only RDIC or EDC, but some of the other ones as well. Um, and that's totally fine, before we do the appointments, we wanna make sure that people are understanding what they're appointing, being appointed to and what the kind of opportunities or the direction of the board is. And so, is that, that was my intent for for putting this because we've
And I think that's great, yeah, I mean, you know.
We've talked, we've talked about it kind of in passing, but haven't actually sat down. Last year, we spent so much time on the bylaws and everything that we didn't really focus on the boards and committees piece and everything. And I really, when I said earlier about even just talking about the pizza place and trying to be more collaborative, I really hope that we can be much more collaborative and a lot of interactions, it seems like people, groups, I don't wanna say people, but groups are very kind of on an island and they are are operating on their island and only on their island and don't want any other collaboration or support or anything. And I think our office, the TA's office, is working very hard to try to streamline communication through social media, through the website, through everything and trying to, I know Economic Development had received a technical assistance grant through CMRPC to kind of work on Rutland-specific branding. But we need all the boards and committees and town departments and elected boards to 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 feed into that because otherwise, we're still all on islands and that piece is going to hurt us when we're trying to kind of unify. So that's a little bit of where I'm coming from as far as trying to work more collaboratively and closely with the boards and committees, um, in the next couple months especially to get them, um, moving a little bit more collaboratively. Tamika, I know you had a couple things, Austin, maybe you as well?
Sure.
Yep.
Um, so one thing I just wanted to kind of put out there for the board's consideration too is, um, the terms that we set for the different boards and commissions. Um, because for some of them, there's no rhyme or reason. Um, for example, the Fourth of July Committee has one-year appointments, but most of those members are the same folks that come back year after year for an appointment. Um, you know, RDIC is five years, that's a long time for the the same folks to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, and then there's others where it's staggered within, you know, so some have, like, um, the events committee recently, we did a three, three, a two and a one. Um, so maybe trying to come up with a more consistent way of creating terms so that people that are being appointed know what they're ki, what to expect. Um, but it also helps on the staff side as well to try to make sure that everybody's where they need to be. Um, I learned today that there are folks that never got sworn in and have been serving for a very long time, which is not allowed. Um, so I think it would help to keep things, keep things more accountable. And, um, I would also say too that I think there's kind of been this understanding in my experience with this, with past select boards that if somebody presents themselves as being interested in a position, that the board is obligated to appoint that person. And I I don't wanna speak for Liam, but in her conversations with myself, it was kind of also understanding the charges to know if somebody's the right fit. And it's possible that maybe they're not the right fit. Um, and so, as much as you wanna take everybody on that's willing to serve, is it the right decision for for the board or commission that they're getting on to?
Right, well, Nathan, if I could say one more thing to the chair. I I think from my, from what I've seen, a lot of these boards, one of the biggest problems is a lot of them, I believe, are advisory boards or advisory, maybe it's the wrong word. They're, like the Finance Committee, they give us their financial advice and then, you know, something like that. I think a lot of these boards have been led to believe, or allowed, to have a lot of authority that they don't technically have.
And Tom, that's why I included that on there.
And I think that's created this problem where these people, a lot of these people feel entitled a- as if to say, what are you talking about? I say that, well, wait a second, you can have an opinion and bring it to us or bring it to the powers that be, that people that do, regardless who the board is, twenty years from now, they bring it to. That's, I think, been a lot of the problem, a lot of people in this town have been promoted without being promoted, so it's fake, you know? And that's why we're here.
And that's why I included that on there was what, whether a board or commission operates under a national law. Um, you know, whether there is something that gives them authority to do that or if it's just a local bylaw or if there's nothing that exists, for example, just the events committee, there's nothing that they, you know, specifically adhere to as far as a bylaw or a national law.
And I think, I I think, Tamika, to your point, we have not historically been consistently in a position that we've had people kind of fighting over positions or fighting for positions on these boards and committees. And I think, so by default, it's just the expectation that I've served for a a term and I'm gonna be reappointed for a term and then if there is interest, then suddenly it's, well, I should be allowed on because I'm the reappointed and that's what the the committee is comfortable with. But sometimes there's value to to changing or shaking up a commit, and I say shaking up, but I mean, just bringing in a different perspective or or whatever. If there's, and if we can have the communication with the committee or the the board or whatever as far as what kind of this board's hope is for this, um, entity or whatever, um, to move forward with is is.
That's why I also appreciate when people submit their letter of interest, not, it shouldn't just be a one-line, I'm interested in serving on this board. Like, why, what do you hope to bring to the town? What qualifications do you feel, what is your background that?
What perspective or qualifica, you know, depending on what the board or committee is, right? Maybe it's not formal qualifications, but there's a perspective or, you know, um, his, like.
And to your, your point, not to be, to your point, Tamika. I I do feel like the town has just said, signed off and on everybody that's submitted and some of that probably is because we haven't gotten a lot of interest. But I feel like we need to stop doing that.
Right.
And we need to really, yeah, they may just be appointed boards, they're not elected officials, but they still have a job to do when you need to hold those, the people that are doing this accountable to do
Right.
that job and make sure that they're doing it for what we need them to do.
And so then the conversation.
Not be afraid to say no to somebody.
Right, and so then the conversation, um, and I haven't gone through, but in some cases, there's been, it's been a struggle for the committee or the the board or committee to not make quorum if those people weren't reappointed. And so how does, is the board that amenable to temporarily reducing quorum so that they, the remaining members can continue or just the business can't be done? You know, some, some boards, it's less, and I don't wanna say imperative, but there's some boards that take a couple months off over the summer and it's, and it's okay. And there's other boards that need to meet very routinely, um, to keep the business going, per MGL, you know, like, um, so.
Through the chair, what is the rule as far as like quorums, right? I i- in the sense, why does a particular board have to have a quorum if it's only in a, uh?
Open meeting law, so it's open, yeah.
But is there any type of official, like what makes a committee?
Down to that.
Right, I mean, what, what, what's, what makes?
Cuz they're a public body.
So any group, say we start a a committee on, uh, you know, front lawns, people's front lawns and we can put it together, like what's the difference?
Yeah, so open meeting law has a distinction that essentially, um, there are certain groups, like if you form, say, like a task force or like the Insurance Advisory Committee, they're not, um, held to the open meeting law, they can meet, they don't need a quorum, it doesn't have to be publicly posted. Any public body that's appointed, um, specifically appointed by this body, the Select Board.
Or another public body.
Another public, yeah, so usually those smaller ones are not appointed by an elected public body, they're, they would be appointed by, say, Austin as the town administrator type of thing.
Right, cuz when I joined the economic, when I first got on this board, I joined the economic committee cuz I thought it was literally a group of people getting together, you know, brainstorming on how we can help the town. And then all of a sudden, it became this formal thing and I'm like, well, I I misunderstood. I literally thought it was just residents getting together, you know, talking about, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Different than like the Rutland Business Association years ago.
Right.
They kind of acted as the Economic Development Commission, but they were not an official, you know, town delegated appointed body.
Well, is that something that we can review as we're going through this, like?
For quorums and everything, yeah.
Yeah, like what should, what's, what, for what the charge is, what's the appropriate member?
Yeah, so Tamika has on here, um, on all the lists, the number of members and the length, length of term. Um, and obviously, if they're appointed or elected and if they're appointed, who the appointed authority is. Um, and we can see down below who the members are and when their, the term expiration is and if there's any vacancies or anything, um, of that nature. So we can definitely, um, I don't, I'm, off the top of my head, I'm not aware of appointed boards that per MGL are required to have a minimum number. Um, I think MGL usually states like a range and then we select where it has set or if it's been through a bylaw has set what the
Mm-hmm.
the membership is, um, but I'm not aware of.
You guys did with the Economic Development Commission, I remember in their charge that was originally presented by, um, a former town administrator, there was a set number of members.
Right, no, but I don't think that per MGL that there's any that say that you have to have, um, like, um.
Like you could have like a two-member committee, maybe?
I mean, I think most have to be at minimum three for.
Yeah.
For, right.
Right, um, but I'm not sure that MGL is super stringent on, like, you have to have a seven, seven-member board and it has to be comprised of this, I think that's kind of where the town has come in and said, um.
There's a couple that I've seen in MGL, but I can't remember off the top of my head, I don't know if it's.
I know Earthworks Board is like.
Planning Board, which I know doesn't apply in this case, but there's something in MGL I saw, but I can't remember.
And I know like Earthworks Board per our bylaw, I think, is like a representative from, um, like Conservation AgCom Planning Board, and then there's a member at large.
But it's worth while looking too because, um, for example, what's one that we did recent, oh, the HPDD Review Board. I realized that that had been the same members for, I don't even know how long and nobody ever reappointed them. So I needed to dug up the original bylaw and after their first initial term, they were each then supposed to be reappointed, what if they wanted to, for a three-year term. And so, but not staggered, so now they were just reappointed and now they're all on the same three-year schedule. And the other thing I'm not clear on is why some boards and commissions have alternates and some don't.
I'm, I was just gonna ask, I see alternate member, I see member, I see
I think the alternate.
Member at large, like what's?
I think, I think, and I'm, I'm not sure, Austin, if you know, I think the alternates are specified in MGL that there are, there is an allow, an allowance for alternates. I think AgCom has asked to have the allowance just because of some of the issues that they work with. Um, and I believe ZBA also has had, um, alternates.
I will say that ZBA from experience has benefited from having alternate members available. But unfortunately, I think most of them end up staying vacant.
Yeah. Um, and I remember a number of years ago, there was a conversation on council on aging as far as the membership and the alternate members and everything, but I don't.
And nobody knows what the term limits are for cultural council. I I don't know, I've, I've talked to the town clerk's office, nobody knows their history, we don't even know if they're still active. I've not heard back from anybody, so.
It all just confuses me, I don't see how boards that don't have any actual authority are so formal.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't get it, it seems like such overkill.
Well, I think some of it is to.
Cuz we value what these boards bring.
Right.
Right.
But if there's no
Accountability.
Accountability for it, then what's, why are we worrying about quorums and everything else? It makes no sense, you have, you know? I I think if we could meet and and kinda clean this up a little bit, it would probably be best, certainly best for the town, I think.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know how we do that, but I think that's something serious we should look at, I think.
Yeah. And I would say, I'm gonna put a plug here for any of the boards that are not up to date on their meeting minutes. There's several that are months, if not years, that don't have any. So, you know, talking about just even what's happening with these boards, you can't find out. It's, it's not documented in the meeting minutes. I I don't know how long. Right, and I don't know how long we keep any of the recordings around for.
I don't know.
How long they're posted for.
But there's several boards and committees that are not reported.
Right, exactly.
For them.
So. Yes.
So we will, um, I thought that this conversation was gonna go long, so I asked to hold the appointments until our next meeting so that we can, I could get a sense from this board as far as kind of the direction that we wanted to go with the charges and everything. Um, and Tamika, thank you for all the work that you and with the clerk's office and everything that you've been doing to try to dig up the the charges and everything so that we can have a comprehensive look as to to where we stand with everything. Um, and then maybe we ask, like, and it will be a big meeting on the eighth, but we can ask if the, at least the chairs and the newly, you know, the people that are up for appointment or reappointment are able to come to the meetings and kind of have a conversation a little bit with us. Um, and know that it's probably gonna be an ongoing conversation for the next couple, couple months because I don't think that we're gonna be able to go through everything in
Mm-hmm.
in one meeting with the stack.
Right, it shouldn't be a rush either, it shouldn't be a rush, we should, yeah, get, get their feedback.
Right.
Have them, like Harry said, what have you been doing? Not, and not in a disrespectful way, but just in a transparent way, what's been going on?
Right, and I think, I mean, I need to go back, Harry, to your point as far as the bylaws being adopted. I'm not sure how the verbiage that was submitted for the, uh, new bylaws was on the reappointments at the term of the fiscal year. Um, I don't, I know we had gone back and forth on it and I don't remember off the top of my head, so I will need to look. Um, at one point previously, it had just kind of been the individuals whose terms were up would continue to serve until they were, they were reappointed, until they resigned, until they were reappointed or until there is a, a new appointment. Um, and I can't remember how the new bylaw works. Um, and that was one of the considerations as far as with the new bylaw, if we needed to appoint in order for the committees to be able to continue to do business or not. Um, and look at the terms and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so.
Because we're changing terms strictly, I don't remember that being anything specific in the bylaw. Would that be at the discretion of the board as to the terms?
I think so, unless there's something in MGL or s, or or a bylaw, like for, for, I think I was looking through cursorly and it seems like, um, RDIC is the one that is appointed that is five years, but it seems like everything else that is appointed is one to three years, mostly three. Um, and I don't know if there's something in the RDIC HPDD bylaw that that's, because it's interesting because the HPDD district zoning, the Heights zoning bylaw speaks a lot to RDIC and references a lot of powers that the RDIC has but doesn't describe the, the RDIC, like, makeup, composition or anything. And I think that that's where we've been for years trying to figure out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just feel like since I've been in town and paying attention as much as I could, I I always hear this topic regardless of the board, it always seems to come up.
Yeah.
And it just seems like, I I, I don't understand why nobody ever does anything about it. It just continues to go on to the next board and continues to go on and nothing ever changes.
Yeah.
And and, you know.
And I, since I've been on the board, I think that there's been one contentious, there's one contentious appointment that I remember with one board or committee that was, got kind of ugly, to be honest. And it was because the reappointed, it was the, the town mentality that the, the person who was up for reappointment would be automatically reappointed.
It's entitlement, yeah, it's entitlement, people are entitled.
And, and that, and the board didn't do that and that ended up ruffling a whole lot of feathers. And so I think that trying to garner, um, interest for boards and committees that may not have a, a vacancy in the sense of because the individ, because an individual is seeking reappointment, but just because they're seeking reappointment doesn't necessarily mean that they should be or will be reappointed. And so how can we continue to garner interest? Um, there are a lot of communities that have very contentious reappointments that a lot of the seats are highly sought after, and so how can we get there to, to, to?
When, how do we market that, if I may?
Yeah.
When we do have vacancies that come up, do we, even if we've had letters submitted for re-interest to be reappointed, do we still promote those as vacancies for? Do we still promote those as vacancies for anybody?
Yes, so when I put out back in May uh something out to the public, I had created um a page on the website.
Yeah.
And any seat that was gonna expire on June thirtieth was listed as a vacancy.
Okay.
Um, so it was put out to the public that, you know, anybody, including if that person wanted to submit a letter of interest again, that anybody could, and we do have, you'll, you will see a, a couple, at least two or three new names on your reappointment list of folks that came forward. Um, it happened to work out that somebody else chose, that they didn't wanna be reappointed. So there wasn't any contention there, but it was advertised as open to the public.
Just open, okay.
Yes.
Alright.
And so I think kind of continuing that and then, um, you know, also in any, you know,
Yeah.
any other board and committee meetings, just kind of saying that there's these vacancies and not saying, oh, like, are you, you, we'll reappoint you.
Mm-hmm.
Or you know what I mean, because ultimately it's the select board who is the final decision maker.
Right.
We ask for the chair's recommendation. Obviously, we, we want some feedback as to what, how an individual might fit in the committee or if they've been participating or not. But to be honest now with Zoom and YouTube and everything, a lot of people can, can watch and not necessarily be at meetings. And sometimes, you know, I made an argument of, I wanna appoint, you know, if we have somebody coming in to, let's say, we had a recreation committee or something and they were coming in to be appointed to recreation, but we knew that they were like wholly anti-recreation and wanted to shut it down and everything, but they had the recommendation of the chair or whatever, because it was a body that they needed filled. Is it in the best interest to submit to, if they're not doing what kind of the charge of the committee is?
Right.
Or, or the change of the committee or whatever, so.
I think it can be awkward too, when you're sitting in a meeting and somebody says, I wanna be reappointed. Who wants to be that person that says, we don't think they're good for us, you know what I mean? So I think, I think sometimes that probably plays a part too.
Right.
And I think that that's.
Don't run for office if you don't wanna make tough decisions. I, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's.
But I was.
Yeah.
But I was gonna say, I think that comes a little bit to, to us, to the select board as the appointing authority for a majority of these boards and committees as to, to making that ultimate decision.
Yeah.
And I think I always struggle with the chair recommendation piece, that's policy, as to how important that, how much leverage that should weigh
Mm-hmm.
um, in, in a com- in a complete packet, you know what I mean? Um, because sometimes, so we will do the appointments in January eighth. Maybe we can, if the boards amenable and the chairs and or, and the um appointed individuals are amenable to at least being on Zoom to have a quick conversation um with us, is that, does that sound fair? And then we can, you know, I was hoping that as we go through our goal setting, that this is a, a goal for the entire board. It's, I think it's an important one for me, we've talked about it, um, kind of on the per- periphery. Um, but to kind of formalize that, but that will be. Is that amenable to, to everyone?
That's good.
Yep, okay. Thank you for that, and we have this, so please review and kind of go through and, and everything also.
Just the, the next meeting is the discussion with the individuals.
Yeah, and.
You don't necessarily have to vote it in though, there's no rush, right, as far as getting these.
We need to double check the
Just double check.
the bylaw stuff and everything and see how it would impact any sort of quorum or, or anything for boards and committees
Okay.
nee- need to do business or not. So, um, Austin, Tamika, you and I
Mm-hmm.
can try to figure that out instead of communication off to the board.
Yep. Just say if, if we can at least prioritize any that need to have
Right.
Right.
appointments.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
To be honest, that would be.
Yep.
Excuse me, by the bylaws that are not yet in effect, they will be soon. Any seat not reappointed by July one is vacant unless there's master and rule of that says they have carryover appointments.
stays vacant until when?
Until someone is appointed to it.
Okay, alright.
What does the current bylaw say?
The current bylaw is silent.
Okay.
So when will the new bylaws be effective?
The moment they are posted, and I don't know when that is, that's up to Anita. And which, she's dealing with things in, in Maine right now, which is why she hasn't been around, but she knows she's getting to it.
Will they be posted before July one?
I don't know.
Or July eight?
But even if they were, they were, I would think would be certain they'll be posted before July eight. And it's when they're posted on or before or after June thirtieth, those are vacant seats.
They still have to be amended, right, the footnotes have to be, I think you do, do your technical fixes and everything to make sure that they're clean and ready to publish?
Oh yeah, they'll be ready.
Okay.
It'd be helpful to have some sort of guidance from the clerk's office so that I can add accurately communicate with those members of those boards and commissions so that they're not.
Yeah, yeah. So my communication to um the clerk's office, um, I can ask when we will be notified, uh, when the board will be notified and the TA's office will be notified, but then also when we can, because we're dealing with appointments that we did not do yet, we're doing, aiming to begin on July eighth. Um, when we can expect them to be posted publicly for, to be in effect, and does that work for the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, moving on, we have council on aging resignation, um, to accept the resignation of June Willie. Um, we have the um notification that was stamped um effective July first of twenty twenty-four. Um, the resignation was filed June fifth of twenty twenty-four with the town clerk's office. Um. And just with a note, we don't have any um option except to, to accept the resignation, it's, um.
Um, Neatie Nichols did indicate that she has a couple of new folks that are interested and she's working on having them obtain your letters of interest.
I was gonna say, I'd heard a few people were interested, but I didn't know where they were in the process, so, yeah, thank you. Um, so I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of June Willie from the Council on Aging.
I'll move.
Is there a second, like a motion and a second conversation? We'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yalvan I.
Waitman I with regrets, I know June's been on for a number of years and has been a valuable asset for, for getting the COA going and bringing a lot of ideas forward. So I appreciate all the time and effort she's put on and wish her well in her COA retirement. Um, moving on to acceptance of gift for a new fence at NyQuag Elementary School from Johnson Fence Company Inc. Um, Austin, do you have?
I do, there's a brief uh memo included in your packet. Um, the facilities director uh from Watchview City Regional School District along with the principal from NyQuag Elementary, uh, reached out um for the board to consider accepting a gift. Essentially a donation of uh materials and labor um for seventy-five foot um fence installation to kind of close off the new um playground project to make it a little bit more safe and secure. Uh, there's a local company, Johnson Fence Company, um, is offering their services and materials uh at no cost to the community. Um, the estimated cost is approximately three thousand dollars. So, um, per MGL, um, it's the board's authority to accept gifts on behalf of the community. So there's also a suggested motion um for the board to consider and happy to answer any questions.
Um, if I may, um, it sounds, it looks like it's a chain link fence to secure the remaining portion. Um, I appreciate this donation and the work that so many volunteer groups have done to get the playground going as well as the grants and everything that Safe Place and Recreation have done. Um, any sort of maintenance to the chain link fen- fence then becomes the town's responsibility, similar to the existing fence that's there and everything, just for.
Yeah, and, and just confirming, is this around the, that backside of the paved area where the
Yes.
where there's uh, you know, stairs that go up, are there?
Yeah, there's, so it's my understanding, there's some gaps um in the fence. Um, so the, this project was actually initiated by the PTO. They reached out, they said, we have this beautiful new playground, we wanna secure it. They were willing to pay and then the company just offered to do it for free. Um, but yes, it is that area where there's um both swing sets and then the, the new playground that was just installed as well.
Are they gonna have gates, cause there's stairs that go up to that?
I believe there's two gates included in this, but don't quote me on that, but there is associated gate hardware too.
And is, will it be locked then and so it's only really accessible to the commu- to the school community during school hours? Or it's more just as a layer of protection to make it?
I don't believe there's any plans to lock it.
Okay.
I don't know if they're gonna take down the sign, but there is a sign there that says that the community can use the playground outside of school hours.
So my understanding is how, the, the plan for it, but I wasn't sure if, um, you know, cause I think it's, it's a tough, tough sell to lock it to, and only allow for the co- the school.
Mm-hmm.
On the flip side, I understand the concerns that if the community can't take care of it, then we're gonna.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if there's concerns with security, good thing, we actually are installing two cameras on that side of the building, one specifically to monitor the new playground.
That's good.
Um, so there'll be much more visibility and obviously the technology is
It's good.
pretty good, we'll, we'll see whoever does it.
Thank you.
And also just a quick note on the, um, there was a playground previously in front of NyQuag.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you recall during April vacation, I think DPW removed the equipment. Uh, the school and the PTO are working on a new plan, I think it's gonna be a little bit more passive, some seeding and lighting, I think for um both staff and, and some of the smaller kids there. Um, I would imagine there'll also be a fence installed there to kind of get off that little area, but
Yeah.
no new equipment installed, just tables and chairs essentially.
Some passive stuff and I, I think at one point there had been talk of maybe a sandbox or, or something, but I'm not one hundred percent sure, so, yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
And I think that that's already fenced as it is, so my guess is that we'd just be upgrading or optimizing the fence.
Yes. Yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the gift from Johnson Fence Company uh Inc. Incorporated to install chain link fence at NyQuag Elementary School.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second I.
Motion and second conversation? We'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yalvan I.
Waitman I. Um, Austin, I'm not sure, um, uh, principal, oh, you can never pronounce her name.
Zarski.
Paul Zarski. Um, sorry, Christina. Um, might, no, I'm not sure if it needs to go to the school committee also, it doesn't.
No, so that, that was the initial discussion, they thought it may have to go to school committee. Obviously because of its um town property, town building, it's the board's responsibility.
Okay, that's fine, I just wasn't sure where the donation was, so that's totally fine, thank you.
Yep.
Um, and our final agenda item, um, on the agenda is the state broadband infrastructure grant. Consider a letter of support for expansion of Verizon broadband network, Austin?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, this is a request um for the, to authorize the chair to sign this letter of support. Um, representative from Verizon reached out a couple of weeks ago, they are intending on applying for a competitive grant through um the Massachusetts Broadband Institute, um, which was created um, and is a part of the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative. Um, essentially it's a quasi-state governmental agency to make Massachusetts more competitive and increase our um technological capability, and a big part of that is broadband. Um, communities like Rutland, especially out in Western Mass, there's not really a solid um infrastructure for broadband. So Verizon identified Rutland as one of those communities, uh, and they're looking to expand their fiber optic network to Rutland. Um, this would be no cost to the town of Rutland, this would be a grant to Verizon um, to install this infrastructure and expand um Rutland residents' options for broadband.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Ten years ago, when we were negotiating a contract with Charter at that time, um, reverting the town's sys- system here. We were talking with them about broadband at that point in time, and at that point in time, it was Charter's feeling that they would probably be handling the broadband that we're now looking at going to um Verizon, excuse me. And so, okay, but at that point in time, it was an unknown and over the years, continued conversations with Charter about it and eventually became, um, kind of what fruitless, I guess, is, is the best way I can describe it because of the fact that a lo- a lot of effort and time that I put in to work on getting broadband into the town of Rutland um, really kind of went up in smoke because um the best answer I could get was not from Charter or Spectrum themselves, but from somebody else that it just was not in their financial model to do something like this. So, okay, so you look at two towns that come to mind, the town of Schuersbury and the town of Princeton. They both have broadband and they both had the electric companies in their town establish the broadband system, alright? So in other words, alright, so there was a, there was a method there that seemed to work for those two towns and I'm, there's, I think also Schuersbury was in on it at some point in time. I'm not sure where Schuersbury stood, stands with it now, but at any rate. Um, I do know right now anyways that um Princeton has a working broadband and when you drive through Princeton, you'll see these humongous antennas in the air. And so that's part of the broadband network, so you know, these are the types of things that um, unfortunately, I was not able to ever come up with a, a serious answer. And so, you know, at this particular point in time, I would um agree with, you know, supporting Verizon's uh efforts here and hopefully, you know, that it would come through. Because it's been a, it's been an ongoing thing for me. But at any rate, you know, there's, there's something here that seems to be taking, taking shape and form. So I would say, yes, you know, let's go with it.
Anybody have any, um, Austin, I just know that it says, um, and I'm not sure if you have the specifics or not, um, that it will deploy their fi- fiber optic network to Rutland locations that either lack or have inadequate broadband service with a particular focus on the gateway municipalities and qualified census tract locations consistent with the program's objectives. So this sounds like, the second half of that sentence sounds like it's kind of all of Rutland, but the first half kind of sounds like it's um areas that, Rutland locations that either lack or have inadequate broadband service. Do you have a sense as to what Verizon's leaning towards?
So they didn't provide any specific um QCTs or the, the qualified census tract
Yeah.
locations that they um were interested in. I know, I know, I think we have at least two or three and that's it. Um, and they're pretty broad in terms of geography. Um, so I would imagine that it, and this is also gonna be something that makes business sense for them as well, right? Um, there's a reason why, for example, um, to Paul's point, other companies may, like, uh, other than Charter Spectrum maybe weren't interested in Rutland back in the day. Um, the fact that Verizon is interested in doing something and expanding their network and thinking of Rutland makes sense. I would suspect that this is a part of a larger package for them in central Massachusetts, so.
And if there's grant money available for them to kind of bolster their package or whatever.
Yeah. And this is all part of ARPA still, um, so this is actually US Treasury Capital Projects uh investments. So it was a hundred and forty-five million that was given to Massachusetts for broadband expansion, so, um, it's a no-brainer, I think, for Rutland to say, why not? Um, and if it works out, great, I think it's better for Rutland residents. Um, if not, obviously there's still options here. Um, and I just wanna note as well, obviously this is, and I think it's fairly clear, but this did come up in our discussions for our fiber expansion, that this is totally separate. Um, Verizon did ask us, are you gonna charge? And we're like, no, we, no, this is our network.
Yeah.
Um, because it would be different to, to um Paul's point, when Schuersbury did what they, um, did, so they did a fiber expansion project, they had to pay a certain licensing fee per pole. It's about forty thousand dollars a mile. So if we were charging for the service, what with the project that we're doing, it would be pretty expensive just licensing process, but obviously this is separate. So this is a little different because Verizon owns or jointly owns a lot of these poles, so they won't be in a similar situation and it's probably just more of the infrastructure itself, so.
I worked closely with Princeton when they were establishing their cable system up there, okay? And so I knew at that point in time what their broadband system was all about and how it worked and so on and so forth. So, okay, so you know, it's something that was, um, something that I would, I was really following closely. And that probably is maybe as recently as five years ago, Verizon had no interest in putting uh fiber into Rutland.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, okay, so times have changed and things have changed, so here's what it is.
I suspect you're looking at all those subdivisions that are, that have been built.
Yeah.
And they see revenue.
Yep.
So anybody else have any other questions or concerns or anything? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter of support. the letter of support for Verizon's application to the Massachusetts Broadband Institute for the Broadband Infrastructure Gap Networks Grant Program.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any motion and a second, any conversation? We'll call Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. Thank you. Um, is there any other business before the board? Our future meetings are July eighth, twenty twenty-four, uh, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Um, and July twenty-fifth is our goals and objectives meeting, which will be at the Wood Studio, I believe. Um, and that will be simply, uh, that's a Thursday night, simply goals and objectives meeting for town administration, as well as
I definitely am not gonna be here on the twenty-second.
Okay.
It's the first night of football and I'm the director, so I miss all that.
So I know we're getting into kind of vacation time and everything, so if anybody's going away, just let Tamika and Austin and I know so we can make sure we have quorum and everything. Um, we do have Zoom per MGL. Anybody's allowed on Zoom now, um, so we have that also. Um, and then hearing, um, anything else to come before the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. We'll call Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. Eight twelve, we are adjourned.